America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen.
Anthony, we have to, I don't want like the message, sorry.
Testing.
Fantastic.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, in line with NJSA for the open public meeting and in accord with DCA guidelines with regard to the functioning of virtual meetings, this regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Township Board of Adjustment has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
Thank you, Mr. Gerter. Roll call, please.
Mr. Costanzo?
Here.
Ms. Fritsch? Mr. Hurley?
Here.
Ms. McElhenny? Ms. Camello?
Here.
Ms. Russell?
She's, there's no extra microphone for right now.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Najarian?
Here.
Mr. Book?
Here, and welcome aboard, Ms. Russell. All right. Do we have any resolutions this evening, Danielle?
No, sir.
Not this evening.
Any minutes?
Not this evening, I do apologize.
All right, they're gonna move right to vouchers. I have two vouchers, one for Danielle Sinowitz for $150, one to King reporting for $250. Can I have a motion in a second?
So moved on the vouchers.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. McElhenny?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes, thank you. I see nothing under announcements, matters for discussion, no administrative approvals. Then we jump down into applications. So at this point, I would appreciate our professionals being sworn in and then introducing themselves to the public.
Gentlemen, each of you raise your right hand. Do each of you swear or affirm testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Each of you go around, I'll guess if you can start with Mr. Hill, and introduce yourselves, your affiliation, et cetera.
Evan Hill, Board Engineer.
Ernie Peters, Board Planner.
Frank Miskovich, Board Traffic Engineer.
Jeffrey Paporos, Zoning Officer.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sure you're aware of this, but I do believe there are some changes to the agenda.
Yes, I was gonna ask you to address those, Mr. Gerter.
So, it's my understanding that, and I apologize, I missed this, the number two matter on the agenda is being carried, or Mr. Paporai?
It's being carried to April 7th. There was an issue with them getting the notice in the paper.
Okay, so they still do need the notice?
Yes.
Okay. So, members of the public who may be available for variance number V3358, Scamato Matter, Three Whispering Grove Boulevard, that matter has been scheduled to the April
7th.
7th meeting, but there will be notice. In addition, Mr. Chairman, application number four will then become application number two, the Strategic Equity Solutions will be heard second. And then, thirdly, the, what is application number five, WSNP, will be application number three for, for this evening. We're then gonna flip back, if there's time, application number three will become four, that's the Luxor Drive, and application number six will be number five.
So, number one is still number one?
Correct.
Okay.
That's what happens when you have a lawyer doing the numbers, exactly right.
Without further ado, then, number one applicant, Rifka F. Hager, variance 3359.
Through the chair, Ms. Hager, if you would please come up?
Hi.
All right, ma'am, if you'd raise your right hand, do you solemnly affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Could you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, your address, please?
Rifka F. Hager, 31 Montana Drive, Jackson, New Jersey.
Okay, so ma'am, and whatever's easier for you, either please get a little closer to the mic, or feel free, you're more than six feet away, you can certainly take it off, and probably both. You can put your right hand, you've already been affirmed, so you can put your hand down. You've given us your address, we appreciate it. And then through the chair, can you tell us why you're here?
So, I have a corner lot, and I have kids, and it would just be so much more helpful if I can get the fence all the way till, till the sidewalk, so we have more room for them to play.
Is there a fence there now?
So, right now, I have a chain link fence that goes just from my house.
I'm looking at the Clearpoint Services survey that you provided with your application, dated 5/28/2020. And if I'm standing on Montana Drive, looking at your house, I guess you highlighted where you wanna put a fence. So, tell me if I'm reading this correctly. You would like to put a fence from the rear right corner of your house, have it come straight out towards the sidewalk, towards Brookwood Parkway, right? Then along your property line, along Brookwood Parkway, until you come to the end of your property line, which is now your very back of your backyard, then make that turn, and run a fence until it meets the chain link fence? Is that it? There's a chain link fence?
There's a chain link fence. I wanted to go a little further in. I measured it, I think I put the measurements, just until there are privacy trees planted there, so just wanted to go up until there.
The fence that you wanna put in, would that be a chain link fence as well?
No, it's a six-foot privacy fence.
So, six foot, that whole length that you Xed in on your, you would like that to be a six-foot privacy? And then, as your six-foot privacy is going along the rear property line, when it meets up with the chain link fence, is that where your six-foot privacy is gonna stop, and then just the chain link stays there?
So, I did wanna go a little further in.
I don't understand what you mean by in.
For, are you, through the chair, are you, a couple things, are you replacing a portion of the existing chain link fence?
Yeah, because my backyard, part of it has privacy bushes, so I wanted, but not the full thing. There's like a two and a half feet, I think, that needs to go.
So, so let me ask you, there's a marking on the survey, at least that you provided, and there's a line that says that, that one corner of your house is 36.8 feet from the property line. You see that? All right. Your proposed privacy fence goes an additional five Xs, whatever that is. What's that distance?
So...
Approximately?
After that distance starts privacy bushes. I don't need to put up a fence there.
No, I understand that, but, but that's the section that the chairman's talking about, and we're trying to get it, we're trying to get, and you even said you measured it. I thought, maybe Mr. Paporai can help, or at least try to create a measurement.
I'm looking at the survey, the section that is beyond the chain link fence doesn't require variance, because it's not in their front yard area.
Fair enough. So, okay, and in fact, there's an existing chain link fence that right now runs almost from that corner back to the line, right?
Correct.
Correct, all right. And Mr. Paporai, just for the record, so folks understand it helps create a little bit of hardship, you touched on it. The reason, the corner lot, if you could just articulate for the record, the reason the corner lots require the variance in the first place, there's two, lead you a little bit, there's two fronts, but maybe, plus we have a new board member, it may help, be helpful.
Right.
The fact that there's two fronts, it extends beyond the front.
Right, the concept with corner lots, there are two fronts, two sides, and no rear yard. And the tallest solid fence you can put in a front yard area is 30 inches. So, anything over 30 inches in the front yard, front yard area would require variance relief.
So, and I just have one other, I apologize for jumping in, and then, so, and this is probably for Mr. Hill, or whomever. So, it appears that the request for the new privacy fence runs from what is her technical back corner there, out to the property line, but her driveway is very close to that. Is there an issue with a site backing out, a site triangle issue, or site issues? Mr. Hill, I guess, is the, usually the person who answers that question?
Based on the survey, the driveway is approximately 10 feet from the curb, eight to 10 feet from the curb. So, assuming that a vehicle stops exiting the driveway, they should be able to see both ways. If they're backing out, then obviously they have to be cautious.
Through the chair, may I follow up? Mr. Hill, are the concern about pedestrian traffic on the sidewalk? How would, how would the fence sightline affect the sidewalk pedestrian?
The applicant's proposal to put the fence immediately adjacent to the sidewalk, which is where the property line is. So, if the board feels that there's a potential safety issue, not being able to see pedestrians, then the board can deliberate or determine if the fence should be located further away from the sidewalk to provide a better line of sight.
Because I think also, in that vein, the property lot 18 to the rear of the applicant's property also has an adjacent driveway that may be affected by sightlines.
Correct.
Ms. Rifka, I want to now look to the other side of your property. On the plans that you submitted, one survey shows nothing, no fence, no proposed fence, on the, on the left side of your property, as I would be facing your property from Montana Drive. And then, and then another copy is included, and it shows a bunch of Xs that would start from the left front corner of the property, and then run out to the property line. And then a third diagram shows that the Xs would run out from the front of the covered porch out to the property line, and I think it reads a "Mend to relocate six-foot stucco fence." What is there right now?
Okay, so, this will start it during Corona, when we were stuck in the house for a very long time. So, at that point, I realized that my kids need space to run around, and I came in in the summer. So, for the variance, I had to wait until, I submitted the papers until I was able to come in. For the other side, I just needed a permit. So, I got that permit in the summer, and I put up a privacy fence.
So, Mr. Paporai, I guess I come back to you. So, then, the fence that, that she currently has there now, in whatever location it is there now, as you face Montana to the left of her house, that's not part of the variance application tonight?
Correct.
Okay.
And the reason, just again, it's a learning opportunity, the reason, Mr. Paporai, is that it doesn't extend beyond the front, the built front portion, correct?
That's correct.
And so, you can also bang it into my head as well, the covered porch becomes part of that equation in terms of not requiring a variance, as long as she's not forward of that covered porch, as opposed to forward of the framed brick building proper?
Right, the covered porch is part of the principal building, and that's where the, nothing can be installed forward of...
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Jeff, how high is that fence that you put up just now? What with the permit? Not the six foot, the chain link?
Well, there is approval for a four-foot solid and a four-foot open fence, I'm sorry, six-foot solid and a four-foot open. And then there was a amended approval for a six-foot solid fence, and nothing is over six feet in height.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Um, I drove by the property, and I totally understand why you'd want a fence being on that corner. My only issue is, backing out of your driveway, you're literally going to have to be in the street if the fence goes to the sidewalk, before you can see cars coming. You've got traffic coming each way, and then the side street. I think that could potentially be a hazard for you backing out. Is there any way you could bring it in a little, so you can see? I mean, there's cars parked on the street, you're gonna be maneuvering around a lot of things to get out of your driveway.
Right, I hear. I'm saying, I always check before I go out, I have a backup camera, but I don't, I'm saying, I'm not sure how you usually do it. If I have to move it up a little bit, then I would.
What about on the other side of your house, where the trampoline is? The left side, yes. Are you gonna have a fence there? Because that wouldn't obstruct your, anything, I mean, you could...
Well, I currently have a fence there.
Okay.
Ms. Rifka, I would echo Ms. Fritsch's concerns as well, but I do believe our professionals had a little pow-wow, and they may be able to offer a suggestion that still provides the solution you need with the fencing, but also addresses the safety concern that Ms. Fritsch is mentioning, and I think Mr. Costanzo also mentioned it, and I'm kinda on board with that as well. So, with that, Mr. Hill, I'm dumping it in your lap for the moment.
Sure. So, what we, what we would recommend is, instead of the fence along Brookwood being right up against the sidewalk, it should be a minimum of five feet away from the sidewalk, which is really your property line. So, you're really only losing five foot of space, but that's, that'll give pedestrians, and your neighbor, and yourself, and the people that visit your home, adequate line of sight to back out of your driveway without being in the, the street. And it'll stop people from damaging the fence.
Is that acceptable to you, Ms. Rifka?
Okay.
Ms. Fritsch?
I, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Costanzo?
As long, I'm just worried about sightlines, and more importantly, pedestrian traffic, that's also a factor to consider in this application.
Much, much better, Ms. Rifka, much better. Do you have any further testimony, Ms. Rifka?
No.
Board members, any further questions of Ms. Rifka? Professionals, any additional issues? All right. With that, you have nothing, no other testimony to provide, correct? All right. And with that, I'm going to open it to the public. Okay, I'm looking at my screen. I have 35, is that right, Anthony? 35 participants, or 31 attendees? It's the attendees I should be looking at, Anthony? All right, so 31 attendees, and I'm gonna try to scroll here, but I'm not seeing any hands up, Anthony. Are you seeing any hands up? All right, so there are no hands up, no one wants to participate from the public, so I'm gonna close the pub, whoop, wait a minute, timeout.
Kim Battle?
How did you see that?
He scrolled up.
Is there a Kim Battle that wishes to be heard?
Fantastic.
Is that a yes?
Yes, he's letting, Mr. Jacob is letting him... Ms. Battle, if you could both unmute yourself and put the video on, please?
Oh, yes.
Oh, we hear you.
Okay, hi, good evening. Yes, I'm at 35 Brookwood Parkway.
Hang on, so, and I, I learned a lesson from another meeting. So, I don't wanna overtalk you, but please, I guess respectfully, pay attention, because we need, and this is for any other member of the public listening, who wants to participate in other applications, we always need to swear you in first, and what have you. So, I apologize for over, over talking with you. So, with that, if you'd kindly raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
If you would kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and then your address, please, and then the chairman will recognize you.
Kim Battle, 35 Brookwood Parkway.
35 Brookwood, and how do you spell your last name?
B-A-T-T-L-E.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Ms. Battle.
Hi.
What questions or concerns regarding this application do you have?
Um, I just have, well, because that corner where, where her house is, it's a very busy corner, and Brookwood Parkway is a really busy street. And her fence coming off, five feet off of the sidewalk, is she still going to be parking into her driveway, or, because I don't know if there's enough space for her to pull her car, would be her, pulling her car in, not covering the sidewalk?
She, the applicant, as far as I understand the discussion in her application, she still has full right on her driveway. The fence will not interfere with her driveway at all.
No, because her driveway goes right through where that fence is going to be.
No, no, the fence is not going to be in front of her driveway.
But isn't it going to where the chain link fence is, to the back of the back property line?
To the back of the property, yes.
Her driveway is right there. And then there's the, the second house of 33, there's also a driveway. 33 has a, has a driveway that almost comes right to the fence line where her chain link fence is, the back property line. There's a driveway to 33, and then her driveway is about maybe eight feet, 10 feet maybe, right off of that.
I'm not quite sure what, what you're driving at, but...
I didn't know if she was gonna be driving her, her driveway's gonna, she's gonna have to be able to open that fence to get into her driveway.
Incorrect. She does, she, her driveway, based upon the survey that we have in front of us, and Ms. Rifka, correct, correct us if I'm wrong, you can pull directly into your driveway from Brookwood Parkway and park in your driveway. The fence is not going to in any way interfere with your driving into your driveway, is that correct?
Correct, the fence is not going on the driveway.
Yeah, the fence...
But is it going to the corner of your house, or no?
Just wait a second, Ms. Battle. The fence is going to be off to the right side of your driveway, not running across your driveway, not running in front of your driveway, et cetera. Does that, does that help you, Ms. Battle?
Is she putting it the same way she has it as the left side of her house, to the, where the pillar is, to the overhang?
Hang on.
No, no.
Ms. Battle?
No.
This is Ernie Peters, I'm the board planner.
Yes.
You were standing out on Brookwood.
Yes.
Seeing it, her property.
Mm-hmm.
He's gonna start the fence from the right rear corner of the house.
Okay.
Straight out to Brookwood, and then it's gonna go, whatever that is, 40 or 50 feet up to her property line.
Okay.
Down the back of her property.
Okay, so it's not gonna meet up to that front overhang?
No, it's not gonna come past her driveway to the front of the house.
Okay.
On the left side of her house. On the right side of her house, where her driveway is, she's gonna start the fence at the right rear corner of her house, and come straight out, parallel to her driveway.
Okay, I get, I'm, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought she was gonna have it the same way it was coming to the left side.
It's not easy to understand sometimes when we verbalize it without photos.
Okay, then, I'm, I'm good with that.
Thank you, Ms. Battle.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Are there any other members of the public that would like to be heard? Anthony, I'm not seeing anybody. How about you? All right. Then I'm gonna close the public session. All right. Board members, it's ours. Do I have deliberations, a motion, seconds? What is yours?
Through the chair.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to approve this, the fence, as, as testified to, and it will go five feet in from the property line. So, that will take care of any sightline issues.
Approximately 29.6 feet from the corner of the house, it appears. I got to do math.
And if I could just clarify the motion, that it's five feet, five feet in from the property line, from the Brookwood Parkway side.
Yes, from the Brookwood Parkway, thank you.
I'll second that. And it'll be a six-foot height?
Six-foot solid privacy fence.
We have the motion?
I have a second.
And we have a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. McElhenny?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes. Your application's been approved. Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
You're welcome. All right. Originally, number two was on the agenda, they've been moved, so our new number two, if I've got this right, Mr. Gerter, is Equity Solutions?
Yes.
All right. So, Strategic Equity Solutions? Good evening, Mr. Pfeffer, Mr. Borden.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Adam Pfeffer, on behalf of the applicant. This is an application for an extension. I have Mr. Borden here to address the technical items on the agenda, and we can go from there. I do just wanna note, we originally, when we submitted the application, had asked for a two, two one-year extensions, but due to the delay in getting before the board, just natural time, that extension would only take us to May. So, we would like to seek a third one-year extension on the record. And the only reason being, we're going back here in a couple months, otherwise. At this time, if I can, and have Mr. Borden sworn in?
Mr. Borden, if you'd kindly raise your right hand. Thank you. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, your affiliation, and then the chairman will board dear you at whatever level he chooses to qualify you.
Thank you. Ian Borden, President, Professional Design Services in Lakewood, New Jersey. We're a consulting, planning, surveying firm. I'm a professional planner licensed in the state of New Jersey.
You're testifying here tonight as a planner, Mr. Borden?
I, yes.
You've testified here many times before, your credentials are accepted.
Thank you.
You may proceed. Thank you.
I guess I'll just briefly describe where, as Mr. Pfeffer said, we're here for an extension. The project is, the applicant was Strategic Equity Solutions. We had obtained a preliminary and final major site plan with a D1 use variance, and resolution was dated May 17 to 2017. and resolution was dated May 17 to 2017. We're here, that extension expired on May 17, 2019. We are here seeking an extension of the preliminary and final major site plan. The project is 2.36 acres on Corporal Marchiani Boulevard, which is off of County Line Road, across from the Old Italian American Club. The approval was for 25,000 square feet of office warehouse in the limited commercial zone. The project was, the design of the project, as approved by the board, was dictated in many respects by the existence of a large electrical utility easement along the front of the site. That easement, it took quite a while for us to work out the utilization, the ability to occupy that utility easement, but that has been obtained. We are proposing not, there has been no changes whatsoever made to the project. The project remains the same in all respects with the use, building size, parking, access, all aspects. And as Mr. Pfeffer said, we are seeking three one-year extensions. The reason is that the second extension, we had submitted this application in August of last year, of 2020, with the intent that we would perfect, hopefully obtain the extension, and then perfect the project by May of 2021, which would be the end of the second one-year extension. But being it's now March 17, we would ask for the third year, which would carry the approval to May 17 of 2022.
It sounds like the easement issue and then the complications that came with COVID are the primary reasons for the delay and now the need for the extension as modified by Mr. Pfeffer?
That is correct.
Chairman? Yes, Mr. Peters?
If I might, I'd take two minutes of the board's time. We have some new board members who've probably never heard about a time extension, so I'd just like to quickly go over that. When an applicant receives an approval for a subdivision or site plan in a particular zone, they are given certain rights, and one of those rights is protection from zoning changes, which means that if we approve something tonight, for a period of time, the town can't go and change what you can do in the zone. So, if you get an approval for a strip mall, we can't go and change it to residential, or vice versa. And so, as it relates to preliminary and final site plans, when they got their original approval in 2017, they were granted two years of protection, which took them up to 2019. Mr. Pfeffer, Mr. Borden, stop me if I misspeak. They are also entitled to request up to three one-year extensions after that. So, in theory, they can go five years on a site plan approval. And then, at some point in time, they'd either have to come back before the board or build it. They are required, when they ask for the time extensions, there's a statement in, it's probably in our report, or it's in the law, it says they need to prove to the reasonable satisfaction of the board that they were barred directly or indirectly from moving forward with the project, getting outside agency approvals, that sort of stuff. During the pendency of this project, because of COVID, the state legislature also enacted what's referred to as a Permit Extension Act, which is sort of a free pass due to the economic conditions relating to COVID. So, if they had a valid approval, say, April of 2020, they're extended forward. But the application that's before us this evening, they're asking to be extended, I would assume, Mr. Pfeffer, from May 17 of 2019 to May 17 of 2022?
Correct.
And Mr. Buck had asked Mr. Borden for the reasons for the extension. He gave those. So, from a strictly planning or land use perspective, it appears they've met the requirements for the request. So, thank you, everyone, for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. It always helps. Thank you very much. Anything further, Mr. Pfeffer? Mr. Borden? Nothing further? Board members, any question? Mr. Hill?
I just have one question. The basis for the request is based on COVID. Is that what you're telling me?
As well as resolving the JCPNL utility access and utilization issue.
The other question I have is more legal. Can we extend something that's already expired?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Hill, is that what you were going to?
So, I don't believe, it's my opinion that the approvals don't expire. It just, what expires is the protection from zoning change. So, they still have approvals in place. They're just asking for continued, or an extension of the protection period, which technically has.
Mr. Borden, to the best of your knowledge, are your approvals still valid?
Yes.
So, that was going to take me to my, first thing I wanted to say was, Mr. Borden and his office has been corresponding with our office over the last two years in perfecting resolution compliance. And one of the last remaining comments, or a couple of comments, had to do with proof that they were able to develop and access the easement, which it seems like that they've made progress on.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
One further question? There have been no changes in the zoning since you got the approval. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, you really don't need the extension anyway?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any further questions from the board? I see no further questions. Then I am going to open it to the public. Is there anyone in the public? And I see 46, 49 attendees, but I'm not seeing any hands up. Are you, Anthony? All right. So, I'm going to close the public portion. Board members, it's hours. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the extension.
Sir, I got a second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Costando?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. McElhenny? Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Ms. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I can, just, Mr. Borden and I also have, later on in the agenda, Mike Demore on the application. The site plan that was requested by the board is still not complete. Mr. Borden's office is working on it. If we can just, and this is the second time we're carrying it, so I have no problem having to renotice once that site plan is submitted and given to the board, as opposed to noticing it now. I just, for Mr. Borden, does not have to stick around for the, any minutes on virtual world, who's maybe here for that application, I would just ask that that be carried, but I will renotice for that one.
All right. You spoke that very quickly, and some of it got lost a little bit, a little garbled. But you're referring to the very last application?
Yes, Mike Demore.
The Basso Street application?
Correct.
All right, variance 3343. And you're seeking to put that off to another day?
Yes, so that Mr. Borden's office can complete the site plan, and we will submit it, and I will renotice once I know, once that's done, as opposed to asking for a date today without having the date for when the site plan will be completed.
Sounds reasonable to me. Any problem with that, Mr. Gertner?
No, sir.
All right. We don't need a motion for that.
No, but we do need to make an announcement, which is, so for members of the public, application, what is application number six on the agenda, the Thomas Day Moore variance 3343, that matter will be carried by the Board of Adjustment at the request of the applicant. He has waived any time requirements. For members of the public, that matter has not been formally rescheduled. Therefore, the applicant has agreed that they will renotice when a date is set for them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pfeffer. Thank you, Mr. Borden. All right, that brings us to applicant WSNP LLC variance 3316.
Mr. Chairman, can we, on the agenda I had, we have an interpretation that shouldn't take more than 20 or 30 minutes. That's, I have both my engineer and planner here, and I don't see my engineer here yet for WSNP either way. I have both applications.
We had considered the process, but since your engineer is not here, and you are ready to go on the, is that the Luxor Drive interpretation?
Yes, it is.
Oh, do you have Mr. Lines as your engineer for that matter?
Yes, for the WSNP.
Yeah, he's on Zoom. I guess he's going to appear virtually. So...
It's news to me, but...
Our preference would be to move the WSNP matter. That would be our preference first.
I just hope that the interpretation should only take about 20 minutes. If that, it's a technical question, it's an interpretation, but you're the chairman, and I'm here either way.
All right, we did a brief quote-unquote consensus. Interpretation is on.
Thank you very much.
So, that becomes Luxor Drive Interpretation 3353.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Adam Pfeffer, on behalf of the applicant. What you have before you is a request for an interpretation. There is a pending, this applicant has a pending application before the planning board. Mr. Peters, in his review letter, raised a question. This, the property in question is in two zones. It's in the R3 and the R1. It's an over-30-acre track, a piece of property. The majority of the tract and the homes, overwhelming majority, are in the R3. Mr. Peters raised a question as to density issue. If we are exceeding the permitted density in the R1, and if that is correct, then the way the application is presented, we would have to come before the zoning board. As opposed to going to the planning board with the application, having this hashed out, we said let's pause the application, come before the zoning board for the interpretation. Luckily, we both have Mr. Peters and Mr. Gertner on both boards. They have some knowledge of this, and that's what we're here for this evening. I do have both the engineer, who prepared everything, Mr. Hopkins, and Christine Cofone, our planner, who has prepared a planning memo and had submitted that as well.
You may proceed.
So, if at this time, if we could swear in, Ms. Cofone?
Ms. Cofone, if you kindly raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, your affiliation, and then through the chairman, he will board dear you regarding your qualifications?
Great. Yes, good evening. For the record, my name is Christine Nazzaro-Cofone. That's N-A-Z-Z-A-R-O. Cofone is C-O, F as in Frank, O-N-E. Business address is 125 Half Mile Road, Suite 200, Red Bank, New Jersey, 07701. I am the principal and owner of the Cofone Consulting Group, and I've been practicing as a licensed professional planner for 25 years in the state of New Jersey. I've been qualified here in Jackson as an expert witness, and before in excess of 400 other, or about 420 other, planning and zoning boards throughout the state.
Thank you, Ms. Cofone. Your credentials are accepted. You're testifying here tonight as a planner?
I am, sir, yes.
Thank you. You may proceed.
So, this is what I hope to be. It's a confusing situation that I hope we can make a little bit more straightforward for you. I agree.
Mr. Chairman, if Ms. Cofone makes this understandable and not confusing, she should get a bonus.
No, it is. I was encouraged in Mr. Peters' letter when he indicated that it was difficult to calculate as well, because I felt better about myself after practicing for 25 years, that I found this to be a difficult situation as well. So, as Mr. Pfeffer indicated, the lion's share of this property sits in the R3 zone. The problem is part of it, which goes through the lot line, sits in the R1. So, I think Mr. Peters, in his October 29, 20, review letter, sets up some scenarios in which you can calculate density, but the one that I personally find to make the most sense, and I think to be the most simplistic, is that where he indicates on page four, if we assume that the majority of the land area of a lot determined which zone it belonged to, then proposed lots 24.01 and 26.01 would be assigned to the R1 residential density calculation, and there would be five units on 8.26 acres for a residential density of one unit per 1.65 acres, which complies. In the R3 zone, there would be nine lots on 31 acres for a residential density of one unit per 3.44 acres, which complies. So, and if I could color that with just a little bit more testimony and opinion, you have a section here in your ordinance in Jackson at Section 244-44, which deals with zone boundaries. In that section, it recognizes that you sometimes have a situation where the zoning is split between two districts, and the line can shift. Now, there's a governor in that section that says you can shift it a maximum of 20 feet, but I think that if we look at that, and we look at what makes the most sense, I think it makes sense to assign the dominant land area to where the lots sit, the zoning sits, to the parcel. And I think when we look at that section, we can be guided and say, okay, so our ordinance recognizes that sometimes we have these parcels that are split zones, so we may have to do some shifting of the zone. Now, could this subdivision be, could the lines be drawn such that we could make them comply? Yes, they could. Could we pull down some zoning, or some land off of Glen, adjacent to Glen Road, and make that conform? We could, but we think it makes the most sense to run this new cul-de-sac in, which we have identified as Luxor Drive, to apply the density, as indicated as an option in Mr. Peters' 1029 correspondence, where we assumed that the majority of the land area of a lot determined which zone it was in, and applied in that way, in which I think you could come to the conclusion that it's a conforming subdivision, and then have that supported by the fact that your ordinance recognizes that when you have zones along different boundaries, that sometimes it makes sense to shift the line a little bit to allow for us to do that. So, I hope that makes it a little bit more simple for you to come to the conclusion that we do, in fact, comply with the density as envisioned for this area. And I certainly, that's really it. We're just here to determine whether or we apply that density, and if it complies.
Ms. Cofone, I'm going to, I read through your letter three times. And I read through, you know, the assumptions and the, as to what Mr. Peters was saying. And to give you the benefit, at least to the construct in my mind, and having listened to Mr. Gertner in the past, and Mr. Peters in the past, in terms of the implications of an interpretation, I am, as a board member and sitting as a chair, I'm very hesitant up here to call a shot that might make policy when that's really not what our job is. I could not, I have, I'm struggling, I'm struggling when reading those sections to determine what the intent was, what the true intent of the drafter was. And I'm going to ask Mr. Gertner again, and I'm going to ask Mr. Peters again to guide us and to guide some of our newer members on statutory construction. How are we supposed to approach this? And then, I think, with their guidance, maybe we can do it. But even in your testimony, you're reading this, there's a question, somewhere in here, doesn't, don't we have to frame a question as to what exactly we're asking to interpret? And I don't know what that question is. Maybe somebody else can help us out, but that's what I'm thinking right now. Ms. Cofone?
Well, I think, Chairman, if I could just distill it down for you, the question that we're asking the board is to, do we apply the R3? Do we apply the R1? Or do we apply some type of hybrid density calculation? And that's why I said I think it sets up, as Mr. Peters outlined in his letter, that we make the assumption that the majority of the land area determines which zone you apply. So, and he gives you the density calculations in which you can do that. So, the question that was before the board this evening is to interpret zoning ordinance as to the application of the R1 or the R3 zoning district standards, and how you handle that on a split-zone parcel. So, I understand your question, because as the board, as you clearly, as the chair, understand, when you make an interpretation, unlike other cases where variances rise and fall on their own merits for each individual case, an interpretation will be binding and will follow. So, what you're really doing here is you're making an interpretation as to how you apply the zoning on a split-zone parcel.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Peters?
I want to try to be illustrative for the board. At the end of the day, I don't take any exception to what Ms. Cofone said regarding the interpretation, other than the fact that they could have not put lots across zone boundaries and caused this mess. But I'm wondering if I could impose on Mr. Pfeffer, perhaps to have the exhibit brought closer, show where the zone boundaries are, show, you know, there's eight acres in this. closer, show where the zone boundaries are, show, you know, there's eight acres in this zone, there's so many in this zone, and then which lots are in split zones, and what lot, what we're trying to assign the zoning requirements for those lots that are in split zones. Because I think that boils it down to those lots, we're going to call them R1s or R3s. So we're providing right now a printout of what is on the board.
Is what on the board, was that submitted to the, do we have that?
It's being handed out, there was no notice for this, it's an interpretation.
I understand that.
So we're providing this, again, it's exhibit of the plans. It's actually fairly straightforward. If you look at the plan that Mr. Hopkins is providing, the red line, so everything north of that is R3. And as you could see, I mean, almost all of-
Let's, hang on. So I have what's in front of me, but we will mark A1 for identification. It's a preliminary major subdivision drawn by WJH Engineering, being utilized at least at this juncture to illustrate what, Mr. Pfeffer?
Our application. So that red line that's almost exactly through the middle of the paper, everything to the north is R3, which is 31 acres. Everything, I'm saying north and south.
So, excuse me, just because I'm slightly colorblind, I apologize. So I was having trouble finding that red line for a second.
We could take the cul-de-sac.
But that red, yes, the red line goes through the, for those who might not, whose eyes may be worse even than mine, so that red line is running across the long way of the paper in the bulb, so to speak, of the cul-de-sac, if you can pick up that red line.
And that's our, and that area is the R3. What I'm going to call to the south of that bulb is the R1. And we have, there are 8.26 acres, all right. And there are two of the lots, of the whole application are in that zone.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Hurley.
Before we get into the legal aspects here, before we get the lawyers, which will confuse me a lot more, with all due respect, I have a simple question. My understanding, when I read the application, is that there's a question as to whether or not you should be before the planning board and the zoning board. The issue before the zoning board is interpretation on the density issue, that if it's a density violation, it has to go to the zoning board of adjustment. If it's not a density violation, it goes to the planning board. If we, if this board interprets your plan in a way that it doesn't violate the density issues, then it goes back to the planning board. Is that a fair statement?
Correct.
Okay. Sorry. Can I finish real quick?
Mr. Hurley, I want to indicate that I think part of the interpretation would be assigning zoning requirements to the lots that are in a split zone. Planning board doesn't have the jurisdiction to do that. Interpretation here would state, this lot, for whatever reasons, is in this zone. Once it's in that zone, those bulk standards apply. That's really what we're trying to do, is to figure out the lots that are in split zones.
I'm trying to make, I'm trying to make it more understandable for my simple mind here, because my understanding of density and definitions under the zoning ordinances of Jackson Township and the Municipal Land Use Law, density is based on the number of dwelling units per gross acre of land, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So we're talking about the number of dwelling units that are within the R3 and the number of dwelling units that are in R1. The only dwelling unit, and I understand it's, what I'm saying here, the only dwelling unit that is into the R1 and R3 is only one lot there. Is that correct? It'd be lot?
2.05, I think.
Proposed lot 2.05.
No. This one, 2.0, part of 2.05.
Now, I'm talking about the dwelling unit, I'm not talking about the lot.
Oh, I see, yes, Mr. Hurley, yes. 2.05, the zoning, the zone line splits that actual placement of the dwelling unit, where on 24.02, and I can't read that, 26.02, the zone line splits the lot, not necessarily the unit.
Okay, stay with me here. So there's only one dwelling unit that's split, has a split zone, correct?
Correct, one dwelling unit, yes.
So if you took 2.05, the dwelling unit in 2.05 and moved it back, it would be completely in the R3, correct?
It would be, but it's my understanding there are environmental constraints that preclude us from doing that, because I asked that very clutched question, I said, why don't we just take that dwelling and rearrange that lot line and make that dwelling sit in the R3? And I was told that the reason we didn't do that is because there are wetlands on that lot that preclude us from putting that lot back further in that way.
So you can't move it back, so it's into the R3?
That's what I'm told, from an engineer, and our engineer is sitting in back of me. So if something has changed from our Zoom call that we had yesterday, when I asked that question, because I said, why don't we move that so that we do not have a zone line straddling that structure, I was told that there are constraints on that property that would preclude us from doing it.
Might be a good idea to find out exactly how far back you can go with it all, because here's my thought. If you move that building back, so it's completely in the R3, the only other aspects of the subdivision that would, that would be in split zones would be the driveways, the roads, things of that nature, both of which are permitted accessory uses in both zones.
That's correct.
So as far as the density definition would be, if that dwelling unit can be moved back, then it appears that all the dwelling units in R3 can be calculated to conform, and all the dwelling units in the R1 can be calculated to conform, and therefore should go back to the planning board.
Through the chair?
Yes, Mr. Costanzo.
Co-tailing Mr. Hurley's comments, if it can't be moved back, could it be moved forward into the R1 zone?
Or moved sideways even. I think if you moved it sideways, you could probably move it, Mr. Hopkins is telling me that we could move it. We could move that dwelling into the R3, so then that would eliminate the issue. If we could move that into the R3 and then apply the R3 standards, then we could do that, so, yes.
Put that dwelling unit, however you do, completely into the R3.
So move-
All other accessory uses are permitted in both zones.
Yes, they are, and that's 2.05. So move 2.05 into the R3.
And if you do that, then you don't have a density violation, based on the definition in the municipal ordinance and municipal land use law. I think that's in Section 4 in Definitions.
So then we would be applying the R3 to all of the residential structures that were sitting in the R3, apply the R1 to the structures that were exclusively in the R1, and we would eliminate the situation where any structures were split zone, actually split zone.
It appears to be the-
I think that's a very clean and reasonable solution.
So, if I, you go first.
All right. With that mindset, if the future homeowner, and this is, I don't know, I'm just thinking out, big picture, if a homeowner were to install an pertinent structure-
An accessory structure.
Accessory, well, okay, yeah, accessory. How would he, the homeowner, be affected? The fact that the main dwelling is still in the R3, but possibly the structure is in R1, would he be affected as a homeowner, be restricted? And again, this is a big picture question.
I think that's a legal conclusion, but I think if-
No, I'm asking-
If it's accessory, if it's accessory to the principal structure, then I would apply the bulk requirements for the principal structure.
Okay. I just want to, just for potential deliberation, so, thank you.
And that question, so, again, if I may follow up and ask, and learning, hearing myself, I apologize, I'm smiling. So what I would suggest out loud is that the applicant carry this application, carry the interpretation. Therefore, the board does not have to reach the question. You know, and if, in fact, you can resolve it based on the discussion that we've had, you could then file, you know, a request to withdraw the interpretation, go before the planning board, and at the planning board, the further, since we're also trying to educate everybody here, you should probably make that request to the planning board, so that if, in fact, the planning board were to act favorably, that concern that Mr. Costanzo just articulated would be part of any affirmative resolution. But before what sounds like maybe a good idea, I'd like to ask our planner if he perceives it as a workable solution, because ultimately he-
I think we're done.
Say again?
I think we're done.
All right. And Mr. Purport, do you have any issue with that as well?
I don't have any.
Okay. And the reason I, and again, I'm not being, I'm not acting with brevity with purpose, again, from an educational perspective. The reason we went back to ask both the planner in this case and the zoning officer, is ultimately those are the two folks who have to, who have to help enforce and interpret anything we do. So it's, this is why he's here, and it brings everybody full circle to make sure that everyone's on the same page.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if the planning board decided for some reason that they, they didn't think something, they could, in theory, carry that application, specify what they want the zoning board to answer, kind of the question you asked at the beginning of the hearing, and then they may have to come back here. But at this point in time, if taken care of, as Mr. Hurley has indicated, the density issue, and I think now it would be proper for this application to proceed back before the planning board, and I think Mr. Pfeffer would be well-served if he simply carried this interpretation in case it was necessary, once he has his planning board hearing.
Sounds like a potential elegant solution, Mr. Pfeffer. What say you?
But still confusing. The only issue I see is, again, we came before the board because we were trying to avoid flip-flopping back and forth and going before the planning board and having them raise this question. I think everyone was in agreement that if all the residential units are in a zone, then we are fine with that being how you calculate the density, with the accessory uses being accessory uses. My concern is that we go, we carry this, we go before the planning board, planning board says, we don't, you know, we disagree, and now we're back before the zoning board. And I think I got everyone, I mean, I shouldn't, I don't want to speak for anybody, but the theme I'm getting from the board is, hey, if you're, if the residential unit is in the zone, then that's how you calculate the density. If that's the case, I would prefer to have this board rule on that, so that I don't have to go before the planning board, come back here for the same question that I think, again, I'm not going to speak for anybody, but I got the theme that you guys-
No, that's fair. Can I respectfully interrupt? I think that, respectfully listening to Mr. Pfeffer's argument, I think that's a fair request. That way-
Excuse me, Mr. Gertner, I'm just losing you a little bit.
What I indicated was, it was my opinion, subject obviously to the board, that that's a fair request of this applicant. So he, the applicant goes back to the planning board with an affirmative resolution of how this board interpreted, and we can keep that narrow to address Mr. Book's concern, that based upon the application presented before this board, the board interprets the applicable zoning ordinance to calculate density based upon the location of the primary residence. That way, Mr. Book's concern about, that interpretation in general remains open to some extent, because who knows how someone else's proposal could come before you. But meanwhile, as to this particular applicant, at least, they have a firm, an affirmative statement of the interpretation as it applies to this, to this application. And the downside really then becomes his, because if for some reason you go back to engineer it, and you can, in fact, move it, you then would have to, you would have the board's interpretations, you can file a full-blown application then at that point.
Correct.
Isn't the question before the board, is a density variance, what's a density, I forget, D5? D something, D5? Is a D5 density variance required based on the plan that has been submitted? Can the board just simply adopt the resolution, dance around the issue itself by simply saying that if proposed, the dwelling in proposed lot 2.05 is relocated to be totally within the R3, no density variance is required? And this way, they don't have to go back and forth.
Even more succinct.
That sounded like a motion.
So, Mr. Chairman, although there's no notice required for interpretations, sorry, Mr. Pfeffer jumping ahead, the board has a tradition to at least opening the question to the public, just in case anyone has any questions with interpretations.
Fair enough. Anything further, Mr. Pfeffer?
That is it, thank you.
Anything further? Anything further from the board?
I got it, I got it.
Yes.
They had mentioned wetlands.
Right, on that one piece of property? What's the severity of the wetlands on that piece of property? I don't want somebody buying a piece of property that's going to have problems with their basement.
So, Mr. Najarian, though, that question, based on where we are now, that question's really not, respectfully, it's not relevant, it gets into the depth of the actual application.
All of my concerns.
Do you have an idea as to answer that?
I have Mr. Hopkins here, but he indicated to me it's a riparian buffer, and we're outside, the house is outside of the 300 feet, the 300 feet buffer line.
So that's a representation.
Thank you.
Anything further? Anything further? To that matter, I'll close this portion of the hearing and open it to the public. All right, Anthony, I see 57 attendees, and I'm not seeing any hands being raised wanting to be heard in this application. Do you see any, Mr., Anthony?
I agree.
All right. All right, so there's no one from the public that wishes to be heard. I'll close the public portion. All right, board members, it's ours. Mr. Hurley, I think you almost articulated it perfectly for Mr. Pfeffer. Can I make a motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to that, based on the question, as to whether or not, based on the plan that's been submitted, a D5 density-
Mr. Hurley, I'll be-
Oh, I'm sorry. I would make a motion to interpret the question that's been presented as to whether or not a D5 density variance is required based on the plans that have been submitted. My motion would be that the interpretation would indicate that so long as the dwelling unit on lot 2, proposed lot 2.05, is moved completely into the R3 zone, a D5 density variance is not required.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch? Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. McElhenny?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
So, Karen, all right. We are going to take a, we're going to take a 15-minute break. We'll be back at, let's see, my clock says 8:11, let's make it 8:20.
The application this evening is for a use variance approval to permit the conversion of a single-family dwelling to a synagogue. Houses of worship are conditionally permitted in this zone, however, we do not meet all of the zoning standards to comply. The property is located on South New Prospect Road, at what we call the T intersection with Wood Lane Road. I'm sure everybody is somewhat familiar with that street. There is a traffic light literally right, almost literally right in front of this property itself. The surrounding properties to our right and left and rear are residential. Directly across the street, when I was growing up as a kid, was a bank, but is now a dental office, standalone building, and then to the, I believe that's the east, to the right of it, there is a small strip center with a convenience store, a pizza shop, et cetera. As indicated, houses of worship are permitted use in the zone. I will point out that the closest house of worship, synagogue, to this property is approximately two miles away, and is in a different township, is in Lakewood. There is no houses of worship, apologies, there is no synagogue in this vicinity for people who live in the area. Just as a quick background, as everyone understands, observant Jews cannot drive on the Sabbath, and they have to walk to a house of worship. That, we'll get to some of the other testimony in a few minutes, but I would just ask you to keep that in mind, and that's one of the reasons why we are here before this board. At this time, if I can, swear in Mr. Lyons- At this time, if I can swear in Mr. Lines, and we can then proceed with the review letters.
Thank you. Mr. Lines, if you kindly raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, your affiliation, and then through the chair, he will board dear you regarding your experience and expertise?
Okay. Glenn Lines, G, L-I-N-E-S, professional engineer, professional planner, and I'm owner and engineering director at New Lines Engineering and Survey in Lakewood.
Have you ever testified before us before, Mr. Lines?
I have.
All right, have you ever, and are you here tonight testifying as a planner or as an engineer?
Mainly a planner, but there may be some engineering involved.
All right. Well, for our purposes and evaluation, if it's both, then tell us it's both, and then would you just briefly give us a little bit of your credentials on each end to qualify you? So, only because I'm unfamiliar, and quite frankly, I am taking a little advantage in that we have some relatively newer members, and, and I would like them to get the benefit of this, so I'm not picking on you, I'm really using you to, a teaching moment, as, as Mr. Gertner had said before.
Yeah. Well, I graduated Chuxton University in 1981 with an engineering degree. I've been practicing engineering since that time, over the years of work for T&amp;M Associates, Bertschall Engineering, rest in peace.
Thank you. As to your engineering, you are, we accept your credentials. And as to the planning aspect?
I have presented planning testimony at numerous planning and zoning boards over the past 30, 35 years.
Is there a licensing requirement to become a planner?
Yes, I have a license in engineering and a planner's license.
Thank you, Mr. Lines.
Both from 1988.
Your credentials are accepted. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Again, the application we have tonight is for conversion of an existing house into a synagogue. As Adam mentioned, churches and synagogues are permitted conditional uses in the R1 zone as long as they comply with Section 244-47, Section C, number 2, which is in regard to lot area, lot width, lot frontage, and a, and a buffer requirement. Just, I know Adam gave you some background, but a little bit more on the makeup of the synagogue's membership. I get a membership list from the synagogue, and basically, all the members live within a mile of the, of the proposed synagogue, either to the, to the north or to the south. The main development to the north is, I don't know the names of the developments, but it's the one with all the state names, Delaware, Utah, like that, and then the other is the, I guess you'd call it the Hickory Hill Development, which is to the south. As few people live on the other side of, of South New Prospect Road, but everybody in that area is within one mile of walking distance of the 115 members that were on the list. The other is, the other thing about the area is, there are, we counted, around those homes is 876 other residential properties. So basically, 13% of the, of the houses in this area are occupied by members of the synagogue. So, for this area, it serves a very large population or, or a greater percentage than some other areas in town. Second is, you know, during the week, there's a morning prayer at 6:30, and evening prayer at 7 o'clock, which would be attended by the most members. There's also a prayer meeting at 10:00 in the morning, which is lightly attended, as most of the men are at work at that time, and pray either at work or near the synagogue. Actually, in our office, they have a, they have a prayer meeting every day at 4:00 in our conference room, so it's not uncommon for the men to, to pray while at work. One of the other issues that was in the letter was vehicular access to the site. Vehicular access currently for that, for the lot we're dealing with, is at the traffic signal. In this, to do this, to do the site plan, we'll be widening the existing driveway to accommodate two-way traffic. Whatever we do to the driveway will require Ocean County Planning Board site plan approval during the site plan phase, as this property fronts on a county road and is at a county traffic signal. As most of the, of the men who come to the synagogue do walk, pedestrian access by sidewalk is contin, fairly contin, is continuous down Wood Lane to Albany, I'm sorry, Albany Avenue, and all the other streets that front on Woodland Road. To the south, there's a footpath that starts on the, I guess it's the east side of Lot 23, and is, goes all the way along South Prospect, and it cuts through some open space within that development. So, except for one short stretch of the frontage on the property next to us, there is continuous footpath to the property.
Through the chair? Yes, Mr. Costanzo.
I just want to know, do we have any diagrams showing these footpaths you're referring to? Any, any drawings, renderings of that?
I had them all prepared and in my computer to put them up to show you during a Zoom meeting. I misunderstood that this wasn't a Zoom meeting for everybody. I've, for instance, Lakewood Zoning and Planning Board, you don't go to the town at all. Zoom meetings actually on the computer, and everybody has their own little windows, and you can put up your exhibits.
Yeah, but you're, excuse me, I'm interrupting on purpose, you, the notice and the requirements generally, and the dictates from the DCA, you're supposed to pre-mark your exhibits at least 48 hours in advance, so that any exhibit that you put up, the public has had at least 48 hours' access. So, I hear what you're saying, but to some extent, that's not really, you know, it's not really a basis for not having them available. They should have been available 48 hours prior anyway.
No, no, I understand, I messed up.
All right, well, given, given that that creates a certain technical and evidentiary issue, there are numerous members of the public that obviously cannot be here, and if they were submitted and, and uploaded for the public to see, they would then be able to view exactly what it is you're talking about. Without them being here, Mr. Gertner, I'm somewhat perplexed or concerned as to how we proceed. Is this something that the applicant might be able to cure, coming back, and, you know, so that we don't, we don't lose time, and Mr. Pfeffer can continue to elicit testimony from his client, but it's a rather critical issue, because the footpaths, at, at a minimum, and I believe that's probably where Mr. Costanzo was going, are critical safety issues. We live here, we drive, and, and we see, we see that many folks are taking life and limb in hand to walk to the synagogue. And to know that at, at some point in time, there's going to be some proposal to make this a much safer way for them to get there on a Sabbath is, is critical, I think, to, to the overall consideration of the application. Mr. Pfeffer, you want us to address that, please? Thank you.
Just to clarify?
Yes.
These are existing walking paths that are actually paved, blacktop, off of our property. They are, and I drive past it multiple times a day, so I, I'm very familiar with these paths. There is a, from the, the development that is behind, and then to the left of it, there's fencing all the way south New Prospect.
So, I mean, respectfully, but on purpose, so first, first of all, and again, this is for numerous members and in general, so Mr. Pfeffer, as an officer of the court, is making these representations. So one reason the board, I would presume, would at least like to see a Google image, would be to orient this lot and these footpaths to the specific site. And, and Mr. Pfeffer is nodding and says, yes. So, I didn't mean, I'm trying to give a, an overview of this, and maybe the best approach would be already listening to the board, and Mr. Pfeffer, amongst other professionals, have done this in the past, which is, he should, so the, obviously, ultimately, it's the board's determination, but the, Mr. Pfeffer can continue as, as moving forward. The board will have questions even based on the verbal testimony, depending on where you are. The board has had a, a reputation of opening to the public as well, so the applicant can also benefit from hearing some public questions, comments, and concerns, and then the full-blown, whatever exhibits the applicant determines would be helpful to further make its application could then be submitted in the proper timeframe. Is that a fair comp, first of all, I ask the applicant?
We have no objection, we want, we want the best and all the facts out there, we don't want any questions later on, and, and.
All right, let's, let's proceed.
So, so just, just finishing up, so these are existing walking paths that are, I believe, blacktop from our property up towards, almost all the way up to Brewer's Bridge Road. They continue up until there's a, there's a corner property, it's, it's undeveloped, and they don't continue that far, but they continue up to that, that portion of the property.
And, and, and Mr. Pfeffer, just, just on that point again, the footpaths, are you saying that they, they run along South New Prospect Road?
Yes, for, for, for a very large portion of that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Well, can I, we'll follow up right there in terms of everyone's learning curve, and I admit it, including myself. So, and this is why the map would be helpful, and I guess I put this to our professionals through, through the chairman. So, the, the municipality has a pedestrian safety fund. These are obviously these footpaths, which are partially paved, partially not paved, and maybe whomever can address this, would part of a request or application be to say, hey, listen, for safety purposes, this municipality, we'd ask you, you approach the township to utilize some of those funds for the sidewalk? I mean, you kind of get where my question is? Is that a proper goal of work?
I think this is where the, the pictures are worth a thousand words, so you're able to see exactly that they are, there is some distance there, they are paved, and I, I did ask the question, and I got two different answers as to who owns, if that's actually on township land, or if it's on the development's land that's literally right behind it with a fence, and I was given two different answers. I don't know who paved that property, if it was the previous development to the rear, or if it was, or, or if it was a township, but at a certain point, these walking paths that are, that are pretty far off the property, it's as if it's a sidewalk, if not more, and blacktop.
All more reason, though?
Yes.
To make the picture. Thank you.
Chairman, can I get a question?
Yes.
This is an application for a D3 conditional use variance, correct? Is it for Lot 22, or is it for Lot 22 and 21?
Right, so, so we were going to get to that, but I'll answer that, that question now, and this is why this, this application's been around for a while. The property that we're seeking the use variance for is for Lot 22.
When you say a use variance, you're talking about a D3.
D3, conditionally used, yes. Thank you. We had submitted this application some time ago. I believe it was in Mr. Peters' report, he raised the question, this property actually has a easement, and a corner of the property is on Lot 21, and there is a recorded easement. Whenever this property was subdivided previously, that had happened.
Okay, so simply stated, is Lot 21 also a part of this application?
So Lot 2, and this, this goes back to a legal issue that, that Mr. Gertner and I, I had originally proposed a consent by Lot, the owner of Lot 21, that we could proceed with this application. Mr. Gertner threw some, some legal reasonings.
Here's my problem. If Lot 21 is part of this application as well as Lot 22, why would you not need a D1 variance? Because you have two principal structures on, on, on one lot.
Even worse, a lot of the, the variances that we seek actually go away. The, the reason is that we're not seeking the, the conditional use on Lot 21 for the house of worship. We're leaving that as a single-family house. They're, they've joined in the application as a technical item, because the house for Lot 20, I'm sorry, for Lot 22, is on both properties.
Lot 22 is the application for the synagogue?
Correct.
Lot 21 is a, a, a residential.
Mr. Hurley, I'm just having a hard time hearing you.
This time it's her turn. Lot 20?
1.
1 is a single-family residential use, correct?
Correct.
And it's existing?
Correct.
Lot 22 has a, a dwelling that crosses over into 21, and your point is that we have an easement that allows us to continue that structure?
Correct.
Okay. But that easement, I saw that easement, it goes back quite a while, a long time ago.
Yes.
So it really allows one residential property to be onto the other residential property. It doesn't say that you can change the use to some other non-residential use. That's, that's my first question. Second question is, since Lot 21 is part of this application, why are you not seeking a D1 variance for two principal buildings on the same lot?
So I'll answer the first question first, so I have to get an answer for the second one. As far as the, the easement, the easement does not say that it's only for residential purposes, and I did review the easement earlier today, again, forgive me one second to get it in front of me. It says, I'm reading from the middle of the easement, I guess, Mr. Gertner, we should mark the easement. The easement was provided in, in the original, in the package, but I guess I would like to mark it, though, as, as A1 at this point.
Yes, please.
I think it was on the filed map, wasn't it?
The, the easement is, is notated on the map, and then there's an actual recorded easement separately from, from that. And the easement, so we'll mark it A1, it's an easement agreement. I'm just looking for the date of it. It was recorded August 13, 1997, in the Ocean County Clerk's Office, deed book 54950408. And it talks about that the house located on Block 120.01, Lot 18, encroaches on a portion of Block 120.01, Lot 17, and the driveway of Block 120.01, Lot 17, encroaches on a portion of Block 120.01, Lot 18. It says house.
Can I, can I, can't I interpretate, interpret house to be a residential use?
I would like, that being said, it does not say the word residential. It says house. I, I acknowledge it says house.
I'm, I'm just curious, I want to make sure you've got all your, your ducks in place here before we spend a lot of time in the application. I guess it's really a legal question, we have to ask our attorney, are there two structures on the same lot, if this was granted? And if there are two structures on the same lot, or the same applica, the same, the same lots that are involved here? Because you'll have a part of the place that is going to be used as a synagogue, and you'll have a single-family residential, so you'll have two principal structures on one lot, which will be 20... I lost it. The lot with the residence on it.
21.
Yeah, the, the lots I read off, just to be clear, Jackson Township had changed the, the lot numbers, that's why, for a little confusion, if anyone, when I was reading from the actual easement. That's why, for a little confusion, when I was reading from the actual easement. So as far as, again, the two principal uses, as a technicality, I can't disagree with you. There is a section, a corner, a couple of feet of the residential house that is on both lots. I can't tell you that it's not. It is. There's a survey. There's an easement. With that being said, we are not seeking the house of worship use for Lot... Sorry. For Lot 21. We're only seeking it for Lot 22. And we added Lot 21 into this application due to some case law, which indicated because they were part of an original subdivision, a consent, signing of the consent, just we can make the application through conversations of both Mr. Gertner and myself. And I agree, we needed them to make them a part of this application, which they are. And one step for...
Here's my concern for myself right now for making a decision here. Is if Lot 21 has a single-family residence on it and the owner of that property wants to demolish that building and rebuild a different residential structure, maybe a larger one, he's going to, he or she is going to have the problem that this board had granted two principal structures on the same lot. And what kind of an argument are they going to be able to present? They can make all kinds of arguments. The problem is, how does the board deal with that now? We're granting something that could create problem in the future here for the residential property owner.
So maybe I'll take it one, I'll take it one step further, going back to the previous application with the interpretation. The corner section of, just want to get the map in front of me. You have a question?
Sure.
That's what they should do. Do they now own both lots? Why don't you follow up? Because someone was dancing around. I think that's the right thing to do, given that you're looking for a fair suggestion.
Mr. Pfeffer, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Does your client own both the lots?
No.
Did you not?
If we did, it would be a much easier application before this board. I'd have a lot less, I'd be requesting a lot less from you.
I mean, not to create even more confusion, but what of the possibility of drawing a new line?
That's one of the things that I was thinking about. And I know if this application had come in before this board, this would have never happened. So yeah, I mean, it would be a new subdivision. It creates a few other issues as far as mortgages and releases and whatnot. But again, we would have no objection to exploring that option. One other point, I just wanted to say that there were, Mr. Hurley's train of thought, when this subdivision was approved, right, so the house already existed. So on Lot 22, there already were two principal uses on one lot, right? Because that house was there and you have two houses now on that property, or two structures on that property. Okay, now, how is that any different, though, than what we're proposing?
I don't think we can answer a question like that. My problem here is that you have the two, you'll have two prin, if we grant this, you'll have, you'll have two principal structures on the same lot, which is a D1 variance, which is a totally different analysis that has to be undertaken than a D3. My other problem is when you complete your presentation, I'm letting you know in advance because of these issues how I feel about it, that if we have to apply the CICA tests, then we have to impose reasonable conditions to remediate any detrimental impact. This is a detrimental impact on your zoning ordinance here. No question in my mind about that. Now, how do you do that? The chairman suggested get a subdivision, move the line over. That's probably maybe a solution. A condition, I would say, is either reduce the size of your building that you're going to use for the synagogue or destroy the building on the other lot that has a residence. Both of those, if we got appealed, both of those would be unreasonable conditions. So where are we going?
Thank you. Again, these are all new issues raised. Good questions about saying they're not, but they were not raised in any of the reports. That in conjunction with the exhibits. I know the chairman would like to get a lot further in this application, but I, these are very good questions and they're not easy questions to answer off, on the fly. I mean, I know there are a lot of people, I will tell you, a lot of the people are in support. And there's a lot of people, I'm sure, that want to voice their opinion. But I would prefer to have an educated answers as opposed to just throwing stuff out at the board. I don't think that's fair to the board, to the public, or to the applicant.
How would you like to proceed, Mr. Pfeffer?
I would like an opportunity to carry this application so we can get some of these answers addressed. If we need to amend the application to include any other variances, to seek out possibly subdividing the property. That would be my request.
Mr. Gertner, procedurally, how do we handle this?
Well, and again, I'm attempting to utilize my words carefully, but I may, this is almost a jurisdictional question. Because if the analysis that the applicant makes creates a situation where the D1 variance is triggered based on the questions or if, in fact, they add as part of this, ask for a minor subdivision along with this with certain bulk requests, it's fundamental, I'll use that word loosely, to the manner in which the applicant wishes and should present the particular application. I think, right, you would agree with that, Mr. Pfeffer?
Yes.
So procedurally, this is why folks come to a board sometimes is they, new issues are raised, as Mr. Pfeffer said fairly, they're not, hadn't been raised specifically by any report. So in fairness to the applicant, right, they had no opportunity really to prepare for what are fundamental legitimate questions. I'm being long-winded because at first I stated, right, that even with the exhibits not being here, this whole tradition of the board hearing from the public. But at this point, this is a, there hasn't been, in my opinion at least, there hasn't been enough testimony where there would be a basis to have public input because this is a question of law and a jurisdictional question. So I know there are members of the public for and against, against Mr. Pfeffer raise that. But the applicant is, based on a new situation, the applicant is legitimately seeking to carry. So it would be up to the board as to whether or not to open to the public. I mean, everyone's here or not. I don't know necessarily what comment the public could give as to the particular questions just raised.
I was just, I was just going to say that in terms of, and again, an educational moment again, Mr. Gertner, is when, when the public is invited in to comment or raise a question as to an application, do the rules of the game, so to speak, require that their comments and their questions be confined to the testimony and the issues that have been presented here today?
That is the, been the process, and I'll use your words, Mr. Chairman. Those are certainly the rules of the game in that it's difficult to comment on issues that have yet to be, yet to have been presented.
So then, as much as, as much as I might like to hear the inclination of the public, hearing that inclination really today would appear to me to be irrelevant to what we considered here today and more likely than not, a waste of the public's time, a waste of our time and a waste of the applicant's time. And I trust, Mr. Pfeffer, on the flip side of the coin, there may be folks out there that may want to voice their positive for the synagogue as well. But once again, they would be restricted to the same construct that the negative would be. So I think it's fair. I think it's a knife that cuts both ways. I think what's good for the goose is good for the gander here. My inclination is to not open it to the public and not go down that path, even though there's 78 attendees out there. I mean, that would be my inclination, but board members, I more than welcome your input on this.
Well, can I just add, I don't, I just don't want to leave anyone who are against with the impression that it's not relevant. It's premature, though.
Better word, thank you. Better word.
Steve here, Steve Costanzo. I just, I would agree that any public testimony would have to be directed on what has already been testified to. And anything else is, again, it's premature. I think the public, we welcome it at all times, public input. But again, I think it's premature at this time. We're at a very technical stage where I don't think the public is, their comments, I think will stray from what we've heard testimony on. And I don't want to taint, you know, any future, you know, presentation of this in that light, positive or negative.
I don't think it'd be helpful.
Correct.
Won't be helpful. Anybody else? Any board members? We all okay on that? We're all okay on that?
So, Mr. Chairman, and through the chair, Mr. Pfeffer, so what sort of timeframe do you need to make this kind of analysis? As you indicated, for instance, the subdivision potential, let me just say this. I think it's important for folks to understand it. So the subdivision, if that turns out, for instance, to be something you go down the road, well, that's fine. But then, as you said, there's a number of releases you would need for mortgages and there's processes to go through. But you have to at least make the initial step. Do you have any thoughts as you sit there?
I mean, I recommend to my client immediately reach out to the neighboring property owner, see if he can make, come to an agreement and if he's amenable to doing the subdivision, to a lot line adjustment application. The other stuff with the lenders and that would be subject to anyway, so it wouldn't hold up this process. So, I mean, I think a 30-day on that end, I think the same 30 days, I'd be able to do some other research on some of the other questions that were raised. I don't know what the board's schedule is.
So, and that's another reason also. So the next meeting is April 7, which is in the middle of Passover in any event.
Passover's over, but it's not, but Passover's, nothing's going to happen. No one's going to be around to do much.
That's what I mean. So 30 days would then be to the 21st? It's more than 30 days, but in other words, in terms of being ready.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at the agenda for April 21. And we have three bulk variances and three single-family dwellings and a use variance. I'm more inclined to move it to May 5, where even though there are applications on, that might be a more conducive date.
And that would give us more time to try and get even more answers.
Okay, May 5. So for members of the public and the applicant for that matter, application, what was application number five, use variance number 3316, WSNP Block 6401, Lots 22 and 21, the R1 zone. This application will be carried to the May 5, 2021 meeting of the Board of Adjustment. Without the need for further notice, the public is directed to the municipal website and municipal locations for publication for information as to how to participate.
Thank you, Mr. Gertner.
Mr. Chairman, I know you hate to hear this, but I have one more comment. If the applicant chooses to go for a subdivision, conceivably, the subdivision could be before the planning board as two residences and separating that lot line. If the subdivision is in fact created, it may eliminate the need for the D3 because you may be able to comply based on all of the requirements. Even if you can't, you can then come back to this board for a D3 on the one lot. But that's up to you.
Understood. We'll explore all the options.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further? Nothing?
Have a good evening.
We are adjourned. There's nothing further on the agenda. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn? Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.